Call the meeting of the Bay County Board of Commissioners to order on October 15, 2024 in the commission chambers. Roll call, please.
Nemic?
Here.
Banajak?
Here.
Mallett?
Here.
Herrick?
Here.
Radke?
Here.
Let's have the invocation and the pledge of allegiance. The people rise.
Lord, we ask that you bless this session of the Board of Commissioners this day and that you lead and guide this board in the decisions made so that all citizens in this community will benefit. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with every team and justice for all.
All right, we have the minutes from the 9:17:24 meeting. Move to approve.
Support.
Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We have the agenda. Yes.
Yeah, I'd like to add two motions to the agenda, one for the motion to receive under petitions and communications from the city of Bay City, an application for obsolete property rehabilitation. That's motion one, and motion two will be go under reports and resolutions of the Board of Commissioners, be item number 10. It'll be resolution number 2024-179, Operation Green Light. I'd like those added to the agenda.
Support. Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion to approve the amended agenda.
So move.
Okay.
Support.
Discussion. Just a note, we're going to put that city of Bay City application under A, between A and B, on the petitions and communications.
Yes.
Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. All right, we have citizen input. If you'd like to step forward and address us, up to five minutes. Anyone wishing to speak? Anyone wishing to speak will hold citizen input. Petitions and communications. We have a presentation by Jim Ream, President and CEO of Bay Future.
Hello, everyone. Thank you for having me. My name is Jim Ream, President and CEO of Bay Future. So far in 2024, we've seen some amazing things happen in Bay City and Bay County. Our summer's been chock full, lots of concerts, festivals, and some of the professional fishing tournaments that are huge economic drivers, and they bring millions of dollars into our community. This afternoon, I'm going to take a few minutes and explain what Bay Future actually does and how we do it. My aim is that by the end of this presentation, you'll have a better understanding of what Bay Future is all about and the service we bring to Bay County. The backbone of any organization is the staff. Bay Future is committed to providing top-notch service, and that is evident by its employees and their love for our community. Moving from left to right, Michelle Judd is Bay County's dedicated Small Business Development Center business consultant. There will be more about Michelle and her services later in the presentation. Those of you who are familiar with Michelle understand the passion that she brings to every task in her plate. As I mentioned earlier, my name is Jim Ream. What's on my resume is not important, but what is important is that you'll be hard-pressed to find another who champions our community more on a daily basis. I advocate for Bay County and its citizens, and I take great pride in having a voice that those inside and outside of our community listen to. Our newest team member is Jose Rios III. He's Bay Future's Economic Development Manager. Jose hails from Allen Park and came to the Great Lakes Bay region to attend Saginaw Valley State University, where he majored in Business Administration. He fell in love with the area and has made it his home. Jose brings a fresh perspective to Bay Future and is looking forward to making positive change in a community he now lives in. I'm also elated to announce that Bay Future's new operations manager will be starting later this month, October 28. So what does Bay Future do? Economic development can be really difficult to define, especially to those outside of the profession. In a nutshell, our mission is to increase the tax base, which in turn increase services municipalities can provide to its citizens. We also support job retention, career advancement, and connecting workforce and employers in the labor market. Our mission is accomplished by following these five tactics of our strategic plan. Our current strategic plan was created in 2020 in response to the community's key challenges at the time, and we're currently crafting a new strategic plan that will guide us going The first tactic we're going to talk about is the development of existing businesses and entrepreneur development. Eighty to ninety percent of all new jobs come from existing businesses. This means that we have nearly nine out of ten chance that job growth in Bay County is going to come from businesses that are already here. Bay Future meets with about 100 targeted businesses per year to provide resources and programming aimed at business health and stimulating growth. The economic development term for these types of visits is called Business Retention and Expansion, or BRE. Every prosperous economic development organization out there invests heavily into their BRE program because it works. Another aspect of this strategic tactic is business-to-business interactions and matchmaking opportunities. This past May in 2024, we held the first-ever Great Lakes Bay Supplier Summit at the Doubletree here in Bay City. This was the first event like this to take place north of Flint. The summit featured a slew of product buyers like SK Seltown CSS, Hemlock Semiconductor, SC Johnson, and Corning, mixed with municipalities like the county Saginaw, city of Bay City, and folks from right here at Bay County. The buyers set up tables and interacted with about 125 suppliers who had goods or services to sell. These events are really important because it can be a real mystery for small businesses to learn how to do business with a local municipality or a corporate entity. These suppliers were able to make connections with the procurement teams of these organizations and diversify their customer base. So how are we able to do all this with such a small staff? Teamwork. We partner with leaders in higher education, utilities, municipal government, state government, and many, many more. One thing you repeatedly hear from me and from folks on the Bay Future Board of Directors is that not one project or initiative can be accomplished alone. It truly takes a village to bring all these efforts home. The future success of Bay County depends on our ability to generate jobs through the attraction and retention of companies, which will create opportunities for our community's residents. Since 2020, Bay Future has facilitated more than $1 billion in capital investment in Bay County. This $1 billion has also resulted in more than 900 added jobs. Many of these jobs are responsible for seeing Bay County's average hourly wage rise from $22.42 in 2020 to $25.28 in 2024. Bay Future also responds to RFP and RFQ submissions for site selection. These requests often lead to site visits and presentations to site selectors to quickly help them understand what Bay County is all about. Economic development is a competitive sport. Many of you may be thinking, why don't we just pitch for a certain company or certain corporation to move here to Bay County? Well, if it were that easy, my job would not be necessary. A recent success story about a company finding a new home here in Bay County is Progressive Mechanical. Progressive Mechanical is headquartered down in Clausen. They were looking to add to their capabilities, and they needed a building. There just happened to be a building about the size they were looking for in Monitor Township, so now they are rehabilitating a previously vacant building, adding about $2.5 million in investment to improve the building, and they immediately hired 25 union workers from UA Local 85. And you would think they'd been open for five years already. They're just hammering it out. So why is this a big deal? A vacant building that is now generating taxes for the township, 25 highly skilled and well-paid workers plying their trade in our county. That's more water being sold, more electricity being sold, on and on. Workforce is a key factor and maybe the most important in every business location and expansion decision. Now that we've added these 900 new jobs, what do we do next? Well, we get to work trying to help these companies get these employees trained. Some of you may have heard of the Going Pro Talent Fund. Going Pro is a competitive grant led locally by our friends at Great Lakes Bay Michigan Works. Going Pro can help companies with the cost of qualified training programs. Since 2020, Bay County companies have leveraged more than $2.1 million of these training funds. I'm a pretty competitive guy, especially when it comes to leveraging public funds to be used in our community. These dollars are going to be spent somewhere in Michigan, so why not Bay County? Bay Future relies heavily on partners that offer some other highly significant training programs employers should be considering. Delta College is our local partner, offering Michigan Reconnect and the Michigan New Jobs Training Program, just to name a few. Michigan Reconnect is important for everybody as it provides tuition-free access to community college to Michiganders 21 or older without college degrees to pursue Pell Eligible Associates' Degrees or Occupational Certificates. This program is great for employers because employees get to upscale themselves for free. The Michigan New Jobs Training Program is an economic development tool for new and expanding businesses, providing the ability to train their workforce at virtually no cost when they implement a training agreement with Delta College. The payroll tax that is normally paid to the state of Michigan for these qualified roles is instead diverted to pay for employee training. This results in thousands of dollars of free training for new employees in qualified positions. Businesses and employers who are looking to relocate or expand often look at facilities or sites with developed infrastructure that addresses their needs. Bay Future is tasked with keeping a list of these available sites and making sure they're ready to submit for potential projects. A new and updated catalog of these sites will be unveiled later in 2024, aimed at increasing our competitive edge and making Bay County more attractive. One way that Bay Future has worked to increase the readiness of sites is by acquiring grant dollars to build out infrastructure to develop plans on sites. Currently, Bay Future is working with Monitor Township, Bay County Department of Water and Sewer, Bay County Road Commission, and the Spicer Group to utilize a $4.1 million grant to add much-needed sanitary sewer infrastructure improvements to the Three Mile and Wilder Road area. These improvements will not only help existing business, but will allow us to attract new business to those parcels. Bay Future is a community player and leader in collaborative efforts. Fostering clear and concise communication and enhancing relationships improves the work that we do. You can learn about what we're up to by subscribing to our newsletter and social media accounts, and you can really help by spreading all the good news that happens. Press releases, events, awards, new businesses, programs, et cetera, promote it all. Especially in social media, it's free and it does a lot of good. Presentations like this are also a way that Bay Future can spread the word about what's going on in our community. So now let's talk about some of the fun stuff. Let's talk about some of the projects that have taken place recently and how they came to be. Merson is located in the south end of Bay City. The company has seen dramatic growth and increasing demand for its graphite products that are used to manufacture silicone chips and semiconductors, given the rapidly expanding electrification and technology involved in electric vehicles. Their customers wanted much, much more output, so they needed to expand. This is where partnerships and collaboration really shine. Merson has had competitive offers to move to other states. They are headquartered in France and have a global presence. They could have literally moved anywhere they wanted. With hard work from the Michigan Economic Development Corporation, city of Bay City, and Bay City Electric Light and Power, the package was put together to attract more than $75 million in investment and add 90 high-paying jobs. We're all looking forward to a ribbon cutting that's going to be scheduled in the spring of 2025, and everybody will be invited. Vantage Plastics is headquartered in Standish. They've been successful in Aronet County for years. They've been so successful that they needed to expand. Companies like Vantage get substantial offers from other states. Some states have incentives like no income tax, free land, substantially lower energy rates. What those states truly lack is a highly skilled workforce, and that helps Michigan and Bay County win deals like this. Vantage Plastics was guided to Bay Future to help and see what was available. They had already found the building they wanted, but this building needed a ton of work. The former Dow Plastic Pipe Building, which is 325,000 square feet on Wilder Road in Bangor Township, had been vacant for about 20 years. So 325,000 square feet, just to give that some perspective, that's about seven acres under roof. Buildings do not age like wine, but they age like bread. This building needed a ton of work. With fantastic teamwork from the MEDC, Bangor Township, Consumers Energy, this project came together. Vantage is investing more than $31 million and adding 93 jobs. This project also will feature rehabilitation of a section of Wilder Road in 2025 with help from MDOT, city of Bay City, and Bay County Road Commission. Michigan Sugar is no stranger to capital improvement projects. Over the years, they've invested millions and millions into improving their facility and their processes, but this project is different. This project is a game changer. Sure, it will lead to more sugar on store shelves and lead to ultimately more money for the grower owners, but it's about more than that. We've heard about sustainability, but this project is a case study in sustainability. The addition of the 22,000-square-foot, $109 million desugarization facility will allow Michigan Sugar to increase its output by 80 million pounds of sugar each year. That's 80 million pounds. Not one more bean in the ground, not one more truck on our roads, not one more pass with any of the loaders, 80 million more pounds. So as a community, we can all take pride that companies like Michigan Sugar are investing not just to affect their bottom line, but to sustain our environment and our community. This project was brought home with the help of MEDC, Monitor Township, and a portion of Euclid was also redone with help from MDOT, city of Bay City, and Bay County Road Commission. So last but certainly not least, Small Business Development Center. Every single Bay County business is currently paying for Michelle to be a consultant on their staff. It's a fun way of saying that funding for her services come from cooperation and commitment from this body and from other public sources. They are in turn free to the user. Michelle is met with more than 180 current and potential businesses so far. Michelle and the SBDC offer a multitude of free and confidential services. One of those services the SBDC offers is no-cost secondary market research to help businesses better understand and reach their target audience. Knowing their target audience is a critical step for any business to reach the right customers and generate revenue. There are many businesses out there who are thinking they don't need help, but they do. There's no shame or stigma in wanting to do everything possible to ensure success. So please, help us spread the word and get Michelle's caseload overblown. Michelle's meetings are always 100% confidential. One way to support the SBDC and the businesses who engage is by attending the Pitch by the Bay competition on Wednesday, November 13, at John Glenn High School. These events are fun and exciting, and you get to witness local businesses joining our community right up there on the stage. Okay, I've gone on quite long enough. I appreciate the opportunity to let you know a little bit more about what Bay Future is and what we do. Please jot down our contact information, and thank you very much.
Any questions?
Just really quick. Jim, what was the date again for the pitch competition at John Glenn?
November 13.
November 13. Thank you.
And I think Vantage Plastics tour is October 30 at 2:00.
I believe you're right. Yes, October 30.
Yep.
Yeah, another question. Jim, you have inspired confidence from all who have worked with you, and I want to compliment you on the leadership you've shown since you've taken over the top CEO and president position with Bay Future. And also say, you know, the list of investments that we made is nothing short of miraculous. So if anyone has any questions in the executive budget this year, I did tweak it, an increase from $75,000 to $100,000, our annual appropriation, to continue to be a premier sponsor of Bay Future.
That's very much appreciated.
And I also want to thank Casey Radke for her service the last four years as fellow member of the Board of Directors of Bay Future. And we're going to miss your case at the end of the year, but you've been an outstanding member and contributing always, so.
Thank you very much.
I just saw that there's a chip plant somewhere else in Michigan, so I'm hoping we can get some more of that chip manufacturing in our area for Seltown.
Well, that's certainly something that may or may not be being discussed right now.
Very good. Any other questions?
No.
Thank you. Motion to receive would be in order.
Support.
Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I'd like to bring forward that the city of Bay City application for obsolete property rehabilitation exemption certificate for 814 Saginaw Street in Bay City. I need a motion to receive.
I'll move that.
I'll support it.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those, motion carries. Thank you. So now we're back to recommendation letter from Bay County Executive to appoint Robert Mead to the Bay County Building Authority. Need a motion to receive.
Motion to receive. Or?
Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
It's been posted. This position has been posted. We'll be voting on it in November 19. Donation to Bay County Animal Services and Adoption Center from Dorothy Glazow-Lance for $70,475.
Move to receive. Support.
Discussion. Mr.?
Well, she was a teacher at several schools, Maclear, Sodden, and also Hampton, where I first met her, as she was my fifth-grade teacher. And she's been a passionate, you know, pet supporter, right, Matt? And so we've been in touch, and she mentioned she wanted to make a donation but didn't really tell us how much. So we were very pleasantly surprised to find that she sent a donation in the amount she did. I did check on her. She lives in central Florida. She's fine. Hurricane came through and was very windy, and she's 91 years old, and she sequestered herself in a little room in her basement with candles, flashlights, snacks, and water until the hurricane passed. But she's doing fine, and hopefully she'll be able to be healthy enough to come up when the ribbon is cut on the new animal shelter to see, you know, part of what her donation helped to support. So she's very grateful. Matt, would you want to say anything about that?
We just can't thank her enough for that donation. We've been on the phone a lot during the time, and it's something she really wanted to give back to Bay County because Bay County is so good to her, and she just loves the animals, so we can't thank her enough for that donation.
Thank you. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those, motion carries. Thank you. We have applications for appointment to Bay County Land Bank Authority to fill one at-large representative to a three-year term expiring 10/16/27. We need a motion to receive.
So move.
Support.
Discussion. All those in favor say aye. And then we'll go ahead and appoint right away. And we'll have a roll call.
Nemic? Hickner? Banajak?
Hickner.
Mallett?
Hickner.
Herrick?
Hickner.
Radke?
Hickner.
Johnson?
Hickner.
Vickick?
Hickner.
Seven votes for Hickner, zero for Mallett.
Need a motion to appoint for?
So move.
Support.
Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those, motion carries. Mr. Hickner. Now, we have the committee of the whole from the October 1 meeting. Mr. Banajak.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Resolution number 2024-165, purchase of military service time for Zachary Terzurka, Sheriff's Department. I move this resolution.
Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Resolution number 2024-166, Eagle Grant Funding for 2024-2025 Year. I move this resolution.
Support.
Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Resolution number 2024-167, My Community Dental Centers, MCDC Agreements Renewals for the 2024 and 2025 Year. I move this resolution.
Support. Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Resolution number 2024-168, Covenant Agreement. I move this resolution.
Support.
Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Resolution number 2024-169, Payables. I move this resolution.
Support.
Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Now, we have a committee of the whole which did not meet, so we've included some of those on the Board of Commissioners' agenda. So Commissioner Herrick.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Resolution number 2024-170, Fiscal Year 2025 Federal Visitation and Access Grant. I move this resolution.
Support. Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Resolution number 2024-171, The 2024 Assessments. I move this resolution.
Support.
Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Resolution number 2024-172, The 2024 Apportionment. I move this resolution.
Support.
Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And I think we have Keegan here. Maybe we should have had him up first before we pass it. We might change our mind. We'll see.
So I just have a really quick presentation here for the 2024 apportionment report.
It's on the computer.
Oh, okay.
They want me to do that. We'd be here till tomorrow. You might not get it done then either.
Okay, so instead of going through the actual apportionment report through the individual millages, I figured I'd be better off just going through what goes into the apportionment report, just a little explanation of how we create it. So one common thing we get at equalization is we are asked a lot of what we actually do, so I thought it might be good to give a little background of what goes into these reports and how we create them. So the apportionment report is a summary of all the millage rates and special assessments that are to be levied in the county for a given year. This report shows the millage rates. It shows the current taxable value, then an estimation of what those millages will generate in tax dollars. Typically, this estimate is a little high because it doesn't take into account the different exemptions and abatements that are throughout the county. The apportionment report is created through the use of several reports. They are the Millage Reduction Fraction Computation. It's called the L4028. This form is completed in May. The next form is the Millage Reduction Fraction Calculating Worksheet. This is also completed in May. And these two reports are, they're both required reports, but they really give the exact same information. And then the last report is one you're probably familiar with. It's the Tax Great Request or the 4029, and that's what we use to list the millages that are going to be levied. Before I go into these reports, I just wanted to touch on the Millage Reduction Fraction a little bit. So this is kind of what these reports revolve around. The Millage Reduction Fraction is, I won't read it, it's on the screen there, that formula. But basically, the Millage Reduction Fraction comes into play when a taxing authority's taxable value from last year to this year grows more than the current rate of inflation. So if you're, the rate of inflation in the last year, I believe we were supposed to use 5.1%. So if the township's taxable value increased more than 5.1%, ignoring the losses and additions, then their millage would be reduced, and this is to reduce the tax burden on taxpayers. And a Millage Reduction Fraction cannot exceed 1. So the first form that we complete is the Authority 28. So as you can see on this form, it lists the taxing jurisdiction, the previous year taxable value, the current year taxable value, the losses, and the additions, basically everything that's needed for the Millage Reduction Fraction. And then the next line on the right lists the Millage Reduction Fraction for each of the taxing jurisdictions. And so this formula is completed for all the townships, all the cities, all of the school districts, all of the taxing authorities, and the development authorities and such. And so we complete this report, and we send this report to all of the surrounding counties because the school districts don't really follow county lines. So we complete this report, send it to all the surrounding counties, we receive their 4028 in turn, and then we compile those totals in order to create a Millage Reduction Fraction for all the school districts. That report, like I said, kind of feeds into this report. This report is sent to each of the townships and cities. It is basically the same information. It's your taxable value information, your inflation rate information, and then it shows on there a breakdown of the Millage Reduction Fraction, and then the Millage Reduction Fraction that they're required to use for this year. And then that would flow right in. And then that would flow right into the final report, the Tax Rate Request Report. This form serves not only as a list of millages that are requested to be levied, but it also shows proof that the correct Millage Reduction Fraction is being applied, and that is in column six there. You can see that this form only had a 1 for their Millage Reduction Fraction. But basically, on each form, it's broken down so you can see that the Millage Reduction is being applied to the correct millages. So every taxing authority in the county must complete this form in order to levy their requested millages and turn it into our office by September 30th, and then we audit these forms and we compile them into this apportionment report. So that is where we get all of the millage rates and all of the information that is included on the apportionment report.
Any questions?
Anybody want to volunteer to help him out with some of these numbers?
Or if anybody has any questions on the actual information on the report too, I'm more than happy to answer that.
Any questions? We've voted on, anybody change your mind?
No.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much.
They have a complicated job.
Here we go. Resolution number 2024-173, a business associate agreement with Region 7, I move this resolution.
Support.
Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Resolution number 2024-174, RFP bid award Bay County Information Systems Card Access to Nerds Express. I move this resolution.
Support.
Discussion. I have a question. What is a Information Systems Card Access? I couldn't quite pick it up in the text.
So what Card Access is, is the card security system. So you see throughout the courthouse and 911 Health Department, there's card readers, like there's one in the back door. This is to replace the equipment that is old, and then the software that runs that equipment is running on a really old outdated computer. So we're utilizing existing software that we already have, and we're just getting some new equipment and some training and implementation of that new system.
Little white card that I have will be replaced with a new?
It will not. We're going to use the exist, we're going to try to use existing card as much as possible. New people might get a different kind of card, but we're going to basically convert the existing users into the new system.
Any questions?
No.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you.
Resolution number 2024-175, RFP bid award for Bay County Department on Aging Central Kitchen remodel to Spence Brothers. I move this resolution.
Support.
Discussion. I had a question, maybe for somebody who's in charge of that, maybe Beth or? Just sort of wanted to know what's all going to be changed. I was at the Senior Olympics, and I told some people they're going to do some stuff in the kitchen, but I didn't know what all the stuff was, so.
That is making sure that we have enough oven space so that we can continue to serve meals right now. We did 1,300 meals today with our bean and ham soup, and we need to make sure that we're in a kitchen that can continue to grow. So it'll be putting in new, I'm sorry, hoods, thank you, the hoods and everything, put in new stoves, another tilt skillet, another steamer like that so that we can continue to grow.
Well, good.
Yep.
Thank you. Any other questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you.
Resolution number 2024-176, the RFP bid award for jail inmate medical care services to Wellpath LLC. I move this resolution.
Support.
Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Resolution number 2024-177, Delta College Fitness Center Agreement 2025. I move this resolution.
Support.
Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Resolution number 2024-178, reports to the County Executive for September. I move this resolution.
Support.
Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Resolution number 2024-179, Operation Green Light. I move this resolution.
Support.
Discussion. I read through it, and Matt presented it, Lindsay added a little flavor to it, and as a veteran, I appreciate that, and I look forward to seeing the green light up in the building there. I'll make an announcement later about Memorial Veterans Day. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Discussion. Otherwise, passes.
That's out from the Board of Commissioners, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Report of county officials, county executive.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. We have a lot we can talk about, but I won't in the interest of brevity, but I want to thank Weston Prince. I'm not sure if he would want to, if I could yield a little time to him before the meeting ends. However, I wanted to say that Weston, as our Bay County Treasurer and Chair of the Bay County Land Bank, took a leading role in securing from the Michigan State Land Bank Authority a $2.1 million grant, which will be used to demolish the former county restaurant, county flea market, and pavilion over there, and also the former YMCA. It was a very dated building, all of those properties were contaminated with asbestos, mercury, and other contaminants. And with Bay City leading the way, Bill Phillips, Dana Muscat, and city leadership, there'll be 104 multifamily housing units to replace those dilapidated structures. And this will help alleviate some of the pressure on housing and housing costs in Bay County as more senior citizens, some of our residents with physical impairments, as well as young couples and other young people starting out, which if they're a lower middle income, they will qualify for residency at that housing complex. And as you know, with the 900 full-time jobs, and I think each one of those jobs that Jim explained in his Bay Future presentation are capable of sustaining a family. So we will experience growth. We have turned the corner on our population loss. We actually with the, as of 2023, we actually grew residents and we didn't lose them, first time in a generation. So we're pleased about the development, and I'm not sure if it'd be appropriate, Mr. Chair, if our distinguished county treasurer would want to give the board an update on what we covered. And a lot of media was there, and Dana Muscat, Weston, and I answered questions and kind of explained what was happening there. And I want to thank you for setting that up, Weston, because we had great coverage.
Yeah, so like you said, we brought in 2.1 million, and I've talked to the board about it before. Jim covered a good chunk of it. Do you want to dispel some misinformation that's gone out there? A lot of people seem to think the 40 million is coming from either the county, as your treasurer, I can tell you we don't have $40 million to just give out, or the city, they also don't have $40 million to come out. Where those development funds are going to come from is low-income housing tax credits that is applied for through MISTDA. So the Housing Commission will handle that, they will do the building of the project. Where we come in is we are just going to be remediating the property and demoing the property to prep for the actual build on it. But it is a very exciting project. You know, the city did a study not that long ago, found shortage of roughly 900 affordable housing rental units located within the city. This will make what seems like a very small dentonnet with 104, between 104 and 112 affordable housing units going into that area. Not far from, as we all know, Uptown, which has received hundreds of millions of dollars in investment. We have Bay City Central down the street, we have the new Y around the corner, Public Transit's around the corner from there, we have the new Great Lakes Bay Health Center that's moving in not far from there as well. So we have a lot of amenities in a very short space, so these individuals that are not only moving in there, but they can thrive in that space. So, but I'm happy to answer any questions that people have on this project.
So people have been asking me, what's with the market, what's with the Y? Well, we've got something going now, so that's good.
Now we're public, grant signed, we're good to go.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Yeah. Commissioner comments. I have a report of the Finance Committee. It was myself, Commissioner Banajak, Mr. Malik. We met on October 3rd with Shawna Walraven and Kim Prisnetz and Lindsay, discussed the 2025 budget process. Timeframe was developed. We held a meeting today pretty much to ratify what we had already discussed. Tentative final approval by the Board of Commissioners will be held on November 19th. There will be a public hearing scheduled for November 12th, 2024. Committee reviewed the list of requested actions for the 2025 budget at the Board of Commissioners' level. No changes were made. There weren't a lot of new service enhancement requests. It was, and I believe the county executive had a chat with some of the department heads and asked them to maybe keep it low.
Absolutely, yeah. It's going to be difficult to replace Shawna, and it'll be an extensive process. However, a lot of our people in finance and in the executive branch have stood up to the demands that we have, and I know we'll get through.
Thank you, thank you for that. So we talked about updating fringe rates, health insurance rates, grants, personnel changes. Of course, the new contracts will be coming up for discussion next year, and Tiffany will be busy, and she gave us a little report of what she forecasts for the future. And changes to the General Appropriation Budget Act Resolution were reviewed. The copies are available for you, and we'll be voting on it, as we mentioned, on the 19th, but the changes will be available by November 12th. Any questions? I guess a motion to receive would be in order.
So move.
Support.
Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Any unfinished business? I don't have any. New business? Next chance for public input. Second try for public input. Third try will close public input. Miscellaneous announcements? There must be some announcements.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Recently, we've had this Linwood City access site renewal going on, this GoFundMe page. Well, as of Thursday, we were basically surpassed the 25,000. We were at 26,000. So MEDC announced that they're going to match us with the additional 25,000, so a total of $40,000, $50,000. So I want to thank everyone who donated, and everyone who's, this has been going on for 20-plus years, on and off. And I want to thank the LCIC and Linwood for doing this. They've been behind this, they've been backing this. And with Commissioner Neemek and myself, we've been involved with this too, and with Jim. And I just want to say we're very happy we got the matching grants, and Phase 1 is done, Phase 2 is almost done. It's going to be groundbreaking ribbon cutting here very soon, so.
Thank you. I just have the announcement that the Veterans Day Services will be November 11th. Should probably be outside, out front, there'll be an announcement on it, 11/11/11. And everybody's invited to attend. Any other announcements? Any sporting events?
Well, Darby was able to take home a win last weekend for their homecoming against Alma, 20 to 7, so celebration there. And of course, the band always wins the day, so.
And homecoming too, yeah. I got stuck in the John Glenn Homecoming Parade, I was going down Midland Road in front of the Willu, and about half an hour later, we got through because I got to see the whole parade.
Perfect timing.
They won their game too.
All right, we have appointments. We have Land Bank Authority, one three-year term, which we just did. Department of Human Services appointment will be from the governor. November, Bay County Building Authority, one unexpired term expiring 11/30/26. December, Bay County Veterans Affairs Committee, one four-year term. Department on Aging Advisory Committee, four two-year terms expiring for districts 2, 4, 6, and one at large. So those in 2, 4, 6, be ready. Any need for closed session?
No need for closing.
Motion to adjourn is always in order.
Support.
Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Carries.